Good evening and welcome to this candidate forum for the Los Gatos Town Council. There are six candidates running for the three open seats. Tonight, we have five of the six candidates present. Candidate Tavana was not available. My name is Sophia Tao, the president of Legal Women Voter Southwest Santa Clara Valley, which covers the cities of Los Gatos, Saratoga, Montessorino, Campbell, and a small segment of West San Jose. I would like to introduce our team who organized and contribute to this forum tonight. We have voter service director Eleanor Yeak, guest moderator Gloria Chong Hu, the timer Tom P. Crowe, question sorter Dan Hendry, and our IT director Emmy Wu. And now I will turn this meeting over to Eleanor Yeak, our vice president in charge of voter service.
The local level, you automatically become a league member. At other levels too, you become a league member at, in our case, the Bay Area, the state league, and the national league. The league has been empowering voters and defending democracy for over 100 years. The league has two distinct roles, the next slide please. The league has two distinct roles. It provides nonpartisan voter services and never endorses or opposes any political party or any candidate. But the league does advocate when we have studied an issue such as education and developed a position on it. Some more examples of the league's voter service program are, next slide please. We provide candidate forums. We provide pros and cons on the ballot measures. Watch for our presentations that are coming up in October. We do voter registration events and we highly recommend that all voters check out VotersEdge.org. It's one-stop shopping when you're looking for information about the current election. By the way, this webinar is being recorded and will be posted on our league's website, YouTube channels, and other social media sites. But before we begin, I'd like to highlight for our audience some general information about this general election. Next slide please. Your ballot will be arriving in your mailbox sometime during the week of October 10th. I caution you to notice how your name is printed on the envelope. Be sure to sign that envelope exactly the same way. For example, if your first name is listed first and then a middle initial and then your last, that is the way you should sign it. If you have any questions about your ballot, you can go to the register of voters where you can track your ballot or you can check your status. See the website here, SCC, which stands for Santa Clara County Vote.org. Or another site you can use is called Where'sMyBallot.SOS.ca.gov. Next slide please. When you get your ballot this year or when you look at a copy of it on Voters Edge, you will notice that you will be voting on candidates for a federal office. That's Congressional District 16, Anna Eschew and Rishi Komar. Candidates for state offices. One countywide office for sheriff. Some new assembly districts, 28, 26, and 23. Some local town and city councils like we are tonight. A local water board, particularly for Los Gatos, Saratoga, and many other areas is District 7. And Los Gatos voters, you will be voting on a local measure labeled Measure J, and it's about the business license tax. Again, I want to remind you, if you want to see a copy of your ballot, you can get it at VotersEdge.org. Next slide please. And now I would like to turn this forum over to our guest moderator for this evening, Gloria Chan Hu. Gloria has been active in the League of Women Voters for many, many years. She has served as the president of the League of Women Voters of San Jose, Santa Clara many times, and is currently serving on the League of Women Voters of California State Board. Welcome Gloria.
Thank you very much Eleanor. Thank you. It's delightful for me to be here to join you. Eleanor and I became residents of our local league at the same time, so we are very close. And so pleased and delighted to be here to welcome and also to introduce five of the six candidates who are running for the three open spots for the Los Gatos Town Council. The candidates are campaigning for a four-year term and are listed, and it will be introduced in alphabetical order. So candidates, please be sure to turn on your video when I call your name and introduce you. Candidate number one is Mary Bodamy. Welcome Mary. Next candidate is Rob Moore. Hi Mr. Moore. The next candidate is Rob Rennie. Hi Mr. Rennie. Our next candidate is Margaret Smith. I think, there you go. Welcome Ms. Smith. And our final candidate is Rob Stumpf. Welcome candidates. We very much appreciate your willingness to be here and to take the time to participate in this virtual forum. As you know, this is an important way for voters to get to know who you are and what you stand for. We will be asking each candidate to make an opening statement, and we'll be doing this in sort of a reverse alphabetical order. After the opening statements, candidates will respond to questions in a randomized order. So I have a system here to do that. We now would like to show you some of the ground rules, and we'll take a look at this next slide. Audience members, please note that we'd like to highlight for you some ground rules that the candidates themselves have each agreed to observe during the forum. League supports the accepted norms of civil discourse, and in this light, candidates have agreed to follow these norms that are outlined in the document that they received and which primarily are listed on this slide. For example, candidates have agreed that they would not interrupt each other and they would refrain from making any personal name or attacks of another candidate. Candidates have also agreed to follow the allotted times for responses. Candidates are reminded that they don't have to use the full-time allotment, but are requested to not exceed the allocated time. So, thank you. I'd also like to introduce our timer for tonight's forum. A very important member of the team, Tom P. Crowe. Hi Tom. Tom will give each candidate reminders as they answer questions about the time remaining and when the time has stopped, and there will be a big red stop sign. For example, the timer on would be 30 seconds or 15 seconds, and then that awful stop sign. Candidates are requested to very gently end their sentence once the stop sign is displayed. And please do not continue beyond this stop sign. All right? This forum is scheduled to last approximately one hour. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to introduce themselves and specifically to answer this first question as part of their opening statement. What qualifies you to serve on the Los Gatos Town Council? And after these opening statements, candidates will then have to answer questions, and their time will be 45 seconds to answer the questions. And these questions have been submitted through the registration process through social media sites or developed by league members. I serve as moderator and will announce and enforce time limits for each of the question. And lastly, the forum will close with candidates speaking in a modified reverse order from the opening statements, and we'll be talking about any questions that you might have missed that they would like to answer. And for that, candidates will have, I believe, at 60 seconds. And now let's begin. We'll start with each candidate opening statement responding to the question, what specifically qualifies you to serve on the Los Gatos Town Council? You will have 60 seconds to respond, and we'll start with the first candidate, Mr. Stumpf.
Thank you. I've been a resident of Los Gatos for 50 years. I began working with the town as a citizen back in 2018 on the issue of wildfire. I worked with members of the community, town council, and the staff to develop and implement specific actions to make Los Gatos more wildfire resistant. Because of that, I've gained the trust of my neighbors, council members, and key members of the town staff. My qualifications, I know Los Gatos. I have a proven track record of working with the town council and staff for several years. My approach to solving problems on town-wide issues to collaborate with community members, town council, and staff. Leadership, I have almost 30 years of business experience at the executive level in for-profit business. Finally, for over 50 years, I've lived in the town and I'm passionate about serving the town of Los Gatos. For these reasons, I believe that I'm qualified to serve on the town council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stumpf. Now we'll hear from Margaret Smith. Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you very much. I am well-prepared and well-qualified to be a member of the town council. I understand municipal government. I'm a good decision-maker, and I have a proven track record of devoting my time and talents to the betterment of Los Gatos. I owned a very large business, Domus, in downtown Los Gatos for many years. During that time, I served as the president of the Los Gatos Chamber of Commerce. It gave me a lot of experience in the business in the business sector, but also working with the town council. I have been actively involved in various commissions, including the Planning Commission and serving as chair of the Planning Commission. As I said, I have devoted almost 30 years of my time and talents to the betterment of Los Gatos, served on numerous town commissions and committees, and I am prepared and qualified for the position. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And now, Mr. Rob Rennie?
Thank you. I am an eight-year council member, clearly lots of experience on the council. I am currently mayor, second time around as mayor. I think that's particularly relevant for this election. If re-elected, I'll be the only council member with more than two years of experience. I can tell you that it takes a number of years before a council member gets completely on their feet and knowledgeable about everything that goes on in town. I'll be able to bring institutional knowledge to the council discussions. It's particularly also important because we've lost many of our directors in our staff. Our police chief is new. Our attorney is new. Our HR director is new. Our finance director is new. Our PPW director is new. I've also served on many boards and commissions around the county, which brings in a unique perspective on how to solve problems in Los Gatos. And I have lived on the east end of town. I now currently live in the center of town, and I've owned a business on the west end of town. So I know Los Gatos quite well for all of these reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rennie. Now, Mr. Rob Moore?
Thank you all for organizing this important event. I know a ton of time and energy goes into putting these together, so I appreciate you all of that. I was born and raised in Los Gatos. I attended public schools here. I have always been very proud to call this community home. And so I always knew that I wanted to give back and contribute to my community in public service, but I didn't always know what that would look like. And so I spent time working for our Congresswoman Anna Eschew out of her Washington DC office. I spent time working internationally for the United Nations Foundation, but I didn't find that I was having the tangible impact I wanted to in my community. And so I've since gotten very involved in the community. I was on the board of the Chamber of Commerce. I currently serve on our town's housing element advisory board. I served on our town's complete streets and transportation commission, and I've been a cert volunteer, working on emergency preparedness for the better part of a decade. I also took a leading role in organizing the Los Gatos Saints United against Hate March, and I work locally at a nonprofit, helping young adults who have fallen off the horse get back on. Perhaps my most important experience though is the perspectives I have gained from knocking on thousands of doors throughout our town and learning what's most important to all of the members of our community. So I look forward to this conversation, and thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And our last candidate, Mary Bodamy?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for the invite tonight. It's truly an honor. As a seated council member, I'm committed to Los Gatos, and I'm very passionate about our town. My voting record is established and consistent with preserving the character of our town. Upon graduation from high school, I became a community service officer for the city of Mountain View. And later, I served as a team leader for the Los Gatos Victims Services Unit for a period of 11 years. Concurrently, I served as a planning commissioner for a period of seven years as chair and vice chair. I have a total of 40 years of community service in both the public and private sectors. I own a business in Los Gatos for 37 years where I provide financial advice, risk management to families and businesses. My experience brings deep knowledge to our strategic priorities. For those reasons, I am qualified and ready to continue my service to the town of Los Gatos.
Thank you, Ms. Bodamy. Now we'll move on to the next part of our program where we will have each candidate respond to questions that have been developed through the registration process or by league members. Candidates, you will each have 45 seconds to respond to each question unless I tell you otherwise. And we're going to be asking these in randomized order, so we have different people coming in at different times. Okay. For this very first question, we're going to start with you, Ms. Bodamy. And the question is, what do you consider to be the town's top three challenges, issues, or priorities? And would you provide us with some ideas in how you hope to address those concerns?
Thank you. Right now, the top concern is housing. It's been a controversial issue. I have served on the planning commission and two years on council, so I'm very experienced in land use issues and trying to balance the objectives of the town with state mandates. And now we've been given state mandates that allocate a large number of housing units that we're not quite accustomed to. And part of that means finding 847 low-income units. So that's been a challenge, and that is a top priority for the town. Along with that, we have to be concerned about neighborhood character because when we try to fit all these houses into these neighborhoods, and by the way, we've upzoned throughout the town, that is certainly going to be a challenge because neighborhoods... Some, I see my stop button.
Well, thank you. I think we've gotten most of your answers, so thank you very much for that. Mr. Moore, would you answer the same question? What are your top three challenges, issues, or priorities, and how would you address them?
Absolutely, thank you. So I'm focusing my campaign on three key platform areas. So the first is community resilience, which I'm really focused on supporting our local small businesses, on addressing our town's financial situation, and on making sure that all members of our community feel safe and included. The second piece is housing and transportation, which is kind of cheating because it's two, but I think that they're very well-connected. And I think housing, it's important that we take a very balanced, thoughtful approach to how we build new housing for our teachers and nurses and folks that need it in town while balancing the, our, everyone's needs in town are single-family neighborhoods and all of that. My final pieces in nature in the environment, so doing our part to fight climate change, preparing for natural disasters, and preserving our parks and open space.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Rennie, same question. What are your top three priorities or challenges, and some ideas you have to address them?
Thank you. It's hard to come up with three because there's so many things you need to worry about as a council member. As a mayor, I had six items that I had as a focus, but I would put my top three as the town's finances. We've, this has been an issue we've been looking at for since probably at least 2015, and we've done several things to try to catch up our revenues with our costs, but it continues to be a challenge. The pandemic has put us further behind. Some of our revenue sources haven't gained. We're getting to the point we may need to consider ways to reduce costs. With time running out, I would also mention getting through our housing element is going to be a challenge. They've given us a very large number. We do need more low-income type housing to keep the diversity in town. How we fit it into the town is going to be difficult, and I've stopped there.
Thank you, Mr. Rennie. Ms. Smith, the same question, your top three priorities or issues?
Yes, thank you. There are many issues, that's true. However, I take safety as my number one issue. I want to make sure that we continue with our strong police department and that we focus on safety issues in town, both personal safety, fire safety, and issues like that. Secondly, I do want to make sure that we can maintain our core services that our residents expect. That goes hand in hand with our budget. And our value proposition is to maintain our library and our police department and our parks, our trails, and I'm very focused on budget issues. Thirdly, of course, I want to encourage and increase our economic vitality. And I believe that there is a strong way to, many strong ways we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stumpf, same question. Your top three priorities or issues?
My top three priorities, public safety, and at the top of that list is wildfire prevention. Going hand in hand there as well is taking another shot at traffic congestion. We have chronic traffic congestion in the town of Los Gatos. Planning for growth, as you've heard other candidates mention as well, that we have to have a plan to develop this with a focus on below-market rate housing. And then last but not least, certainly, the financial management of the town. We do have a structural deficit. Our revenues are running lower than our costs that has to be reversed. So with those three items, we'll need to take actions in each of those areas to make progress and again, continue to make it a safe community and provide the services our community desires.
Thank you. All right. We're, a couple of you have alluded to what essentially will be the next question. And the next question is, the town of Los Gatos is facing a projected budget deficit for the next coming year, 2023, 24. What measures would you propose to offset or minimize this projected shortfall? And we'll start with Mr. Moore?
Thank you for the question. So I think we basically have two options here. We have cost-saving measures and revenue-increasing measures. We are a relatively lean town on, so in terms of cost savings, we can look at salaries. We can look at, you know, our town staff, but predominantly, I really think that we need to maintain all of our services, and so I think we need to look at revenue generation. And so the town has proposed a ballot measure that is going to create between $1 and $2 million, and I think that's fantastic. I also think we need to look at other tax structures that need to be updated. And I also think what I bring to the table is a lot of government connections to go out and find grants from our state and federal partners that can work on things like roads and parks and all of the things that are very important to us in town.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Ms. Bodamy, same question. What would you do to mitigate or minimize a projected budget shortfall?
Okay, so it's clear that we have a five-year forecast with a $20 million deficit. So what do we need to do? We are not collecting enough revenue to offset our expenses. So that being said, as a council member, I recently voted to put a ballot measure on the ballot to increase our business tax license fees. That would actually provide 1.2 million in annual revenue. Other options that we could consider would be a parcel tax or a sales tax increase. Those are the issues that I would be looking at and task our finance commission for assistance on in making the best decision for our town.
Thank you, Ms. Bodamy. Mr. Stumpf, the same question. What would you do to minimize or to offset the budget shortfall that is being, that is projected?
Thank you. The first thing I'd like to bring up is this structural deficit did not happen overnight. For the past 10 years, our costs have been running at twice the rate of our revenues. So we need to really, again, I'm not a tax and spend guy. So I'm the guy that's going to come in and say, we need to be addressing the cost side of the equation. We've got to slow our rate of spending. We've got to review the major cost drivers in the town. That means putting everything on the table, whether we like it or not. And it doesn't mean that we're going to move forward with bad options, but we need to take a broad look at the options we have. Our headcount has not grown a lot, but salaries have. We need to review our salary and benefits structure and develop a plan to slow the growth in the years to come. Bottom line, before we raise revenue, we have to earn the right to do that because it will be the voters that decide.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, same question.
Yes, thank you. I think that we're all in agreement that there is a structural budget deficit. I have suggested one way to attempt to bring this under control is to form a task force made up of the town council, the finance commission, the town manager's office, and other stakeholders, including town employees and residents, to meet for a very short period of time, six to eight weeks, and focus on revenue-generating ideas as well as cost-cutting structures. I do think that there are assets in town that are sacred to us, and I want us to honor those, including the library and the police department. So for me, of course, we can increase the economic vitality. We're just coming out of a two-year pandemic. I believe that our revenues are going to increase as people are spending time in business. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Mr. Rennie, the same question.
Well, thank you. I think everybody's already answered most of the question, but there is definitely a structural deficit. We've been working on it and raising revenues for quite a while. Mr. Stumpf's right that we need to start getting, looking at costs. We did a survey in town to try to understand what services, because reducing costs, one easy way to do it, well, I don't know if it's easy, is to talk about what services do we remove. So we did a survey to find out what services in town do our residents most value. And I can tell you, even before the survey, that the police department came up on the top of it. So that, we've asked staff to look into that further. We've also asked staff to look in, is there any way we can increase efficiencies, possibly in parks and public work, so we can do the same amount of work with less people? And I'm out of time already.
Very much too little time for all these good questions. We're now going to turn to another area that is of key interest to the league. And there's a lot of talk about the impact of money and politics, and this is an area the league has focused because of its impact on elections. Please share with us what you anticipate your total expenditures will be for this campaign. And please identify your top three donors, whether they are local or from outside Los Gatos. Mr. Rennie, we ended with you, so we're going to start this one with you.
Well, I actually haven't planned to spend very much on this. As you're probably aware, I was running for assembly in June, so I have just mailed everybody in the town of Los Gatos twice a couple months ago, and I knocked on a couple thousand doors a couple months ago, and people know me. I just couldn't go out and ask for money again after all the fundraising I did for the assembly run. So my, I, at this point, don't expect to exceed the $2,000 limit where you have to actually file the form. So my spending will be minimal. And I don't, actually, I don't have any money donated. I just went to the bank today to open a bank account, so I don't have any donations yet.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. The same question. The expected expenditure for your campaign, your top three donors?
Thank you for the question. Yeah. So I would, I think I'm in the ballpark of about $30,000. My top three donors have all been local there. I don't know them off the top of my head, but I know my largest contributor to me. I think that if I'm asking others to contribute to my campaign, then I need to be taking the initiative and putting that in there. And I have been so grateful to everyone who's been so generous with me. I have gotten donations from people that I've never met before. And so it's really heartening, and this has been able, this has allowed me to spend my days knocking on doors, putting up long signs. And, you know, it's, this is especially difficult for young people in terms of fundraising. I work nine to five, and so a lot of candidates are, in races like these tend to be retired or independently wealthy, and I'm not, so I'm very grateful to all of my donors.
Thank you, Ms. Bodamy. Same question.
Thank you. So I expect to have about a $10,000 campaign expenditure. Of that, I've raised about $6,500. And my top three donors, I'll start with Bill Keen, and that's $2,900. Sandy Decker, I believe was approximately $1,000. And I probably have three people tied for $500, so I will name my brother Anthony Badami as being one of those three.
Thank you. Mr. Stumpf, same question. What are your expenditures for the campaign and your top three donors?
To be an incumbent, I'm right there with Mr. Moore, right around that $30,000 level. My top three donors, one is actually a local business person in Los Gatos, but not a resident of Los Gatos. And my second one is a resident of Los Gatos. As the third donor, also resident of Los Gatos. So primarily, my donations have come from residents of Los Gatos.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Same question.
Yes, thank you for the question. My budget for this campaign is around $15,000. I have loaned my campaign money of $5,000, but my larger. contributors have been Ron Dickel. And Beverly Bryant and Cynthia Lazarus. Thank you.
Thank you. Although the next question is, and Tom, please note this, our timer, this will be our 62nd. Question, it's a little bit more complex. It's already been alluded to by several people. And this is the question. The town of Los Gatos has learned a lot from what happened as a result of the development of Phase One of North Forty. That's been, I gather, for Los Gatos rather painful. What do you think about how that all evolved and happened? And elected? How will? That impact? Your decision making on future housing developments in Los Gatos? Complicated questions. Again, looking at the experience of Phase One of the North Forty, that huge development in Los Gatos. And the trials and tribulations with it. What do you think about that and how it evolved? And if elected, how does it impact your decision making on future housing development decisions? And Ms. Smith, we're going to start with you on that.
Yes, thank you. Phase one has developed as permitted, so I want to make sure that we we understand that. The permits were granted and the development has taken place. While I. I understand from my visits to the what we call the North Forty, a community is developing there. I've seen young children. And families in the development, so I would say that's the plus for us. We do not have another large piece of land. As large as North Forty, so future developments will probably be smaller. I'd like to see more affordable housing. I'd like to see more multi-use. Where there's residential on the top, commercial on the bottom. So I'm hoping that we. Can take our lessons from North Forty in a positive way and apply them to other sections of development. So thank you.
Thank you. The same question to Mr. Rennie. What did we learn from Phase One of North Forty? How will it affect your decision making in the future on future housing?
Well, I had to be a council member through that whole process, and I can tell you I have a lot less hair because of it. It was a very frustrating process for me because it was clear. The the developer came and they met all the objective standards and legally, we couldn't say no to the project. But it was so large that people in Los Gatos just, you know, it's it's too much all at all at once kind of thing. In Los Gatos, in the last 10 years, we've grown 3%. That's 0.3% per year. So. We really haven't grown very much, and to have a large development like that is is difficult for Los Gatos to to swallow, basically. As you know, it went to court after we denied it and it it got built anyway. So what was really frustrating to me is. We couldn't get input from people on, well, it's gonna have to happen. How would you like us to change it? And in the end, we got exactly what the developer gave us. I would hope we can do smaller developments at a time in the future. I know it's more efficient for developer to do large ones, but. That much at once is just kind of too much for Los Gatos.
Thank you, Mr. Rennie. Mr. Moore, the same question.
Thank you. So talking with folks throughout town, especially individuals that live near the North Forty, and I'm one of the people that lives near the North Forty. This is one of the things that I hear most about probably traffic in the North Forty. And so I think there's a lot that we can learn from this. I think that we. I don't think that this was a project that went super well. I think as Mr. Rennie alluded to, the relationship with the developer went sour. And so. I think moving forward, I like what the things we got right is it's transit oriented development. There is some level of mixed use, but I think. Moving forward, we really need to be prioritizing green space affordability and, you know, actually more of that kind of retail restaurants, that sort of. Thing that makes the space interesting and also eases traffic because living off of lark, that is a horrible stretch of road right now, and. And people are upset about that justifiably. So I think in terms of all of our new housing, it really is that balance between, you know, thoughtfully building housing that our teachers, our nurses, our young people, our working professionals can live in. While not hurting the character and charm of our lovely town.
Thank you. Ms. Bodeney, same question to you.
Yes, before I get on that, I want to clarify my prior answer about Phil Keon. It was 2,500 and not 2,900. I need to be accurate. So North Forty, I was chair of the planning commission at that time, and it was very controversial. As far as the stage one being completed from me chairing and seeing the plans at that time and what I see now. I was led to believe that it would be more architecturally pleasing than what I'm seeing now. And secondly, at the time, we were led to believe that we would get more affordable housing. We really got market rate housing, and we got 49 senior units. Stacked on top of a market hall. Disappointing, so I will be skeptical in Phase Two. Phase Two, we have a plan in place. I intend to enforce it. Unless something comes forward from a developer where we have affordable housing units for low income. I could consider that, but we have a plan in place that involves a lot of commercial development to serve the residential.
Thank you. Mr. Stump, same question.
And first, I'd like to thank a couple of the council people here for the work that you did on the North Forty, because as you said. It definitely was trying trials and tribulation and the feedback that I get. Not a happy time for our community. In fact, there are many, many community members that are still upset about the North Forty. And so. As Councilmember Badami just said, hopefully. We will be able to get some additional community input. With the developer, not only the input, but that we'll have a developer that will truly listen to and act upon community input. Certainly, a big priority is below market rate housing. It is a big challenge in our community because of the construction cost, the land cost. And the affordability gap, even with below market rate housing. So that's an area that the council, I think, also needs to provide more leadership to. And the mixed use, commercial, I think, very important. We could absolutely use more sales tax revenue and transient occupancy tax should there be. A hotel potentially that could go into that mix of the North Forty.
Thank you, Mrs. Stump. Okay, we went with a very difficult question. We're going to go kind of one that's kind of a fun question. If our viewers a glimpse of you as as an individual. So the question is, please describe your favorite activity or thing to do in Los Gatos. And we'll start with you, Ms. Bodeney.
That is easy. I work downtown and I have the life. I'm upstairs on a balcony where I can view all of downtown, walk to the post office, walk to. Dolce Spazio, get ice cream downstairs is root stock, get a glass of wine, go shopping. But most importantly, I love having my granddaughters and my daughter in town so that we could enjoy this together. I also enjoy hiking the the trail. I try to do that three times a week and usually do it at my lunchtime. So life is good in Los Gatos.
Thank you, Mr. Stump, same question. Describe your favorite activity or place in Los Gatos, a thing to do.
When I live in the hillside of Los Gatos and and up in that our area, the property owners own anywhere from an acre up to 60 acres of property. I've become kind of the neighborhood coordinator. And spend a lot of time with my neighbors on the weekend, getting to know them, helping neighbors. Because we always have a lot of projects that we do up on the hillside. So a lot of my time is invested there. But I certainly do enjoy being down in downtown Los Gatos and enjoying just the community that we have.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, same question. What's your favorite activity or thing to do in Los Gatos?
Well, thank you very much for asking me the question, and I'm smiling to myself. Because recently I've discovered Pokemon Go with my granddaughter, and I'm hoping that the viewers will know what that is. I have discovered through Pokemon Go that there is a quiet little meditative garden hidden near the library. I have. Found that there is near the post office, a beautifully, a beautiful mural. On a utility box. So I would say the discovery of Los Gatos in a. Different way than I had anticipated in the 30 years that I've lived here. So my most recent activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rennie, what would be your favorite activity or thing to do in Los Gatos?
Well, similar to Councilmember Badami, I I live near downtown rather than work, and so I tend to walk into town all the time. My car may not move for a week or more at a time. I I love to be able to walk everywhere. I love to go. Sit and have lunch. I often study for council meetings while having lunch somewhere. The other thing I really like to do in Los Gatos is is ride my bike. I frequently will do the the. Loop where you ride up Kennedy and and back down Shannon, or maybe I'll go out Hicks, out of Los Gatos into the county and up Hicks. Sometimes I ride up by Mr. Stump's house up. You know, either up Cypress or up his his street. Name's gone out of my head at the moment, but that those are my favorite things to do in Los Gatos.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
Thank you for the fun question.
Thing or activity?
Yeah, so people that have seen my lawn signs will be unsurprised that I am I'm an avid biker and I love biking throughout town. It's actually sad because the campaign I have not been able to bike much recently, but. I love biking both to our our open space and so going up, I'm kind of like Mr. Rennie alluded to, up into the hills and all of that, but also biking. To a lot of our local businesses in town. And I, like Ms. Smith, I've discovered a lot of new places, a lot of new little parks and. Businesses that I had no idea where they were, you know, especially out in East Los Gatos and in the Rinconada neighborhoods where. I think folks don't might not spend as much time. And so I've really enjoyed just kind of exploring all of Los Gatos on my bike.
Thank you. The next question has to do with an issue of something that's been affecting this town hall. A Los Gatos governance says very plainly that it is committed to inclusivity. What does that mean to you? And what did you take away from the recent March Against Hate in Los Gatos? And Mr. Moore, we're going to start with you.
Appreciate this question. I think it's an incredibly important one. I, as I said in my opening statement, I was one of the main organizers who. Put together Los Gatos United Against Hate March, and I spoke to that. Crowd of thousands there and called for civility and kindness and inclusivity in our community, because I think that's something that we are sometimes lacking. Folks may have also seen posters posted about me throughout the downtown that were attacking me for my support of our LGBTQ community, our black and brown neighbors, and. And that's really hurtful and upsetting. I think that what inclusivity means is standing up for those people in our community. And explicitly calling out hate when we see it, because I think that that is the more that we let that fester, the more that it perpetuates. And so. I think that is an incredibly, incredibly important issue and one that I would focus on strongly as a council member.
Thank you, Ms. Bodeney. Your your answer to that same question?
So you asked, what does inclusion mean to me? To me, it means welcoming. Now, I realize it can mean different things to different people, but when we want to talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion altogether. You know, the town recognizes that it needs to increase its efforts to make everybody feel welcome, respected. And included and safe. So as a council member, as part of our 2040 general plan. I approved the racial, social, and environmental justice element of our 2040 general plan. And just two weeks ago, council heard a report that we had commissioned from the American Leadership Group. To further develop a plan so that we can be more goal oriented as to what we want to do about these issues in our town.
Thank you. Mr. Stump, same question about inclusivity and what you're what you took away from the March Against Hate.
In fact, sort of along the lines of Councilmember Badami. Boy, words have meaning, don't they? And people have a tendency to define words like inclusive differently. In my walking around the town and similar to Mr. Moore knocking on doors, we're the new guys that need to be out there. Knocking on doors and meeting the town. I've met a diverse group of people. While I've been out knocking on doors and having conversations and. And really, from our residents. No major issues raised about that area, that feeling. People love our community. And I think that sometimes more negativity is placed on our our community than is actually appropriate. We have great people of good character in the town of Los Gatos.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, same question.
Yes, thank you for the question. Inclusivity to me, of course, means a welcoming and a respectful attitude to newcomers. Or people who are different. The last census showed that 25% of our residents are foreign born. And a language other than English is spoken at home. So our demographic has changed. Contrary to Mr. Stump, I have also knocked on doors of people who have told me stories of feeling marginalized. In the Los Gatos community, and that, of course, it makes me sad, but also it makes me more determined and inspired. To follow the tenants that we proposed during the United Against Hate March. Like Mr. Moore, I was very involved in the march and just so grateful to see thousands of people who showed up for the march. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rennie, the same question.
Yeah, everybody's had some great answers on it. For inclusivity, for me, same thing. It 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 means that it's a welcoming town for people. Of all ethnic backgrounds or or, you know, whether they're LGBTQ also, or, you know, all 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 sorts of people are welcome in Los Gatos. And I like the word Margaret used that, you know, it's a respectful welcoming to them. I I also knocked on a door too in Los Gatos where people told me they didn't feel like the town was diverse and. They felt, you know, they clearly weren't Caucasian and they were considering moving away, which which made me sad. We are making a lot of efforts in the town. We now. Voted to put a Jedi team in place to help us also figure out more ways to make Los Gatos welcoming and to. In increase our diversity, you know, in our staff and in our commissions.
Thank you, Mr. Rennie. The next question, what programs do you think the town of Los Gatos should implement? In its efforts to achieve. Carbon neutrality and to make the town more climate resilient. Please be specific in some of your ideas. And since Mr. Rennie, we ended with you, we'll start with you. And I'll repeat the questions if you need to. What programs do you think the town needs to implement in its efforts to achieve carbon neutrality? And please be specific.
Well, I I would start with, we haven't worked on a sustainability plan in in a lot of years. And we haven't allowed our community really to engage in a sustainability plan. So I'd really like to see us. Get to work on, again, engaging our community and and updating our sustainability plan. A lot of things have changed. I was a founding board member for Silicon Valley Clean Energy where we started. That and I was chair when it when it first started delivering 100% carbon free electricity. This now provides, you know, if we're getting 100% carbon free electricity in Los Gatos, it kind of changes the equation of of how you can be sustainable. We've done some things with reach codes with new residential. I think we could do some more on on commercial. Boy, the time went by fast.
Thank you. And then there are a lot of good ideas. We should have had time for more. Mr. Moore, same question. How do we go toward carbon neutrality in Los Gatos?
Good question. I think one of the best things we can do in terms of our carbon footprint is reducing our vehicle miles traveled. And so. Some of the things we can do to do that are better bike and pedestrian infrastructure. And and then I also think electrification is really important. So I think there's great programs that we can look at from other cities like Campbell that. Encourage electrification, both of the home and for electric vehicles. I also think planting more trees is really important. This is something I've actually heard a lot from people is that they go to, you know, cities in Colorado or. They go to Chicago and they see a lot more trees and trees are amazing. You know, they've they've been around for forever and they're really effective at carbon sequestration. And so I think that's really important. And I think reach codes, encouraging plant based eating, all of these things are important.
Thank you, Ms. Bottomy. Same question. How do we move toward carbon neutrality in Los Gatos?
Well, that's a good question. I think that we've made a lot of efforts. We've even included an environmental and sustainability element in our general plan, and we had a very vocal group in town called the Plant Based Eating. And so we've got an implementation program in that general plan as far as education to that respect. One of the things we can do is further our multimodal network, more pedestrian bicycle pathways. More electric vehicle charging stations. Right now, we have nine downtown. We've got LED traffic lights. And we can continue saving our trees. We are designated Tree City USA. We've got Meatless Mondays, and we have a single use carryout bag ordinance. I think we've done our part. And regionally, I think more can be done.
Thank you. Mr. Stump, same question. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Stump, same question.
Yeah, I think I would come with maybe a couple of warnings. Um, one of the things that we're looking at is in our latest general plan. You know, numbers are being proposed that actually will greatly potentially expand the growth of Los Gatos. And obviously, expanded growth would mean expanding our carbon footprint, so. That's one of the things that we need to take a very, very close look at. The other thing I would just caution people about. Talking about all electric is a wonderful thing. But in the state of California, we're electric constrained. The other thing that we do is we basically push the generation of that electricity to other communities. Where they're using tremendous amounts of natural gas. We are not at a full renewable baseload power. And that's something that is going to take state leadership to make happen.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Smith, same uh, question.
Yes, uh, thank you for the question. I actually am looking at it uh, from a more practical point of view and um, hopefully. Taking cars off of the street. Um, I would propose, and I'm hoping that um. My fellow council people will support me in this, a trolley service um, that is all electric and it. Takes people from one commercial destination to another. I've said perhaps we could start. At the North Forty and on a trolley and open air, beautiful electrical, um, electric trolley and take us all the way down. To um, the downtown and loop back around again, so that would be one way to. Uh, get people out of their cars. Of course, we are multimodal. We are encouraging bike use. Uh, not everyone can bike, um, but we certainly have a strong contingency uh, of the kids going to school on bikes, so we appreciate that.
Thank you all. Well, we have come to this point in time where it's um, looking at the clock. We need to move to our last question and also your closing statement. And as part of your closing statement, I hope you'll answer the question. What question did you wish we had been able to ask you and why? And how would you have responded um, for the closing statement um, and response to this question, you have sixty seconds, and we're gonna. Uh, have you answer this in a modified reverse order from the opening statement? Um, and we will begin with um, Rob Rennie.
Thank you. So um, I wanted to cover, you know, we uh, didn't have much time to answer a lot of the questions. When I was mayor the first time in twenty eighteen, I had six focuses with town. I, I mentioned there's many things to worry about. I wanted to mention. You know, my priorities then were emergency preparedness, which has later turned into more fire prevention kinds of things, but in addition to the emergency preparedness, we've. Put a lot, lot more effort into our spirit programs and our vegetation management and other things to prevent fire in town. Um, one of, another one of them was our economic vitality of our, of our downtown. Back um, before twenty eighteen, Los Gatos was starting to be a tired town downtown. People were going other places. We've spent a lot of effort to um, streamline our permitting, get rid of some. Rules that made it difficult for businesses to come to town and say that town was not open, so I'd say my biggest accomplishment over those years has been. What we've done with downtown. Come take a look. It down, downtown Los Gatos is the place to come again. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mary Bodamy, same question. And your closing comments.
Okay, so my question is. How will the twenty forty general plan shape our small town character? Los Gatos has always taken pride in its small town character. We have fought hard to preserve it by managing growth. Maintaining our historic history and preserving our scenic hillsides. The land use element of our twenty forty general plan eliminated the first and most important goal. Of our twenty twenty general plan, and that was to preserve, promote. And protect the existing small town character and quality of life within Los Gatos. For those that supported up zoning twenty-five hundred acres of land, it must have made sense. For those that supported doubling our population and tripling our housing numbers, it must have made sense. But for me, I use common sense and knowing that our small town character will be significantly altered. And our quality of life diminished. Council makes, council members make very important decisions impacting our future growth and character. Experience matters in making these decisions and guiding the town with balanced growth.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rob Stump, your response and closing comments.
I would have appreciated a question on financial resources needed to make Los Gatos more wildfire. Resistant, including recognition that it's a largely unfunded effort. A catastrophic wildfire in Los Gatos would do billions of dollars of damage potentially. And wreak serious economic consequences to the town for years to come, so what needs to be done? We need enhanced communication technology. We need enhanced roadside fuel reduction. We need enhanced weed abatement along the town's thirty-one miles of roadway through the wildland and urban interface. We need improved roadways that serve as evacuation routes. We need improved water distribution. In some of the hillside areas, and we need to comply with the state's defensible space requirements. Wildfire is a serious issue. Prior to the fire that destroyed the town of Paradise, Los Gatos was rated a higher risk for wildfire. That has not gone away. We can all hope that wildfire will never happen here. But as we all know, hope is not a strategy. This needs serious leadership to make Los Gatos wildfire resistant.
Thank you. Same question to uh, Margaret Smith?
Yes, uh, thank you for the question. As I stated in the beginning, I know that I am well prepared and I'm well qualified to be a member of the town council. I have spent over thirty years involved in town government in one way or another, as well as a strong volunteer in our schools. Uh, what I do know, and the question perhaps I, I wish someone had asked was. Um, what, what did we learn from the pandemic? For two years. We were closed down, schools um, were irregular. People worked from home. What did Los Gatos learn? Well, one thing I know I learned is that we are a resilient and a resourceful community. We are flexible. We can meet the challenges, both financial and public safety that are coming before us. I know we can do it. We did it after nineteen eighty-nine. We did it after the two thousand and two dot com bust. We did it. After the two thousand and eight Great Recession, and now we are coming back. We're in a great reset. As far as I'm concerned, kids are back at school, people are looking at returning to their offices. And uh, we, we can do what needs to be done to keep our town, the wonderful town that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rob Moore, same question and closing comments.
Thank you. So the question that I wish I was asked tonight is, why is it important to have a diversity of ages and perspectives on the town council? Um, if I were to be elected, I would be the only person on the town council younger than the age of sixty. Um, and I think that's important because I plan to live in this community for the next sixty or seventy or eighty years, however long I make it. Um, and so I, I think this really provides me with a important long-term vision for the future of Los Gatos. I think that important issues like climate change, affordable housing, financial planning, impact young adults uh, more than, than almost anyone, and so. Um. I, with that, I think if uh, I, I believe that I have the experience, integrity and dedication that is required to serve well on the town council. Um, and so with that, if you want more for Los Gatos, I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you all.
Thank you. Well, thank you all candidates. Um, really wish you well in your campaign. We very much respect and appreciate the fact that you've taken the time to run. For office and, and it's very important for what you do and what you're all here for. Um, thank you again once for participating tonight. It's very important. Now, I'll turn the program back to Eleanor.
Thank you.
Eleanor, I believe you're picking up at this point in time. Again, many thanks to the candidates. It's wonderful. I enjoyed hearing all of your comments. Eleanor?
Thank you. Uh, audience members, thank you for your attendance. We hope you have learned a lot tonight that will help you make your decision on whom to vote for. I want to specifically mention again, uh, how proud I am to live in Los Gatos and to see such a strong slate of candidate, candidates. I hope many people will have the opportunity to view this forum. I think we covered many topics that are of importance to our town, and I think our candidates appear very well uh, informed and able to lead us in a good direction. I also want to thank our voter service team who organized this forum tonight. And lastly, of course, I want to remind everybody about voting. The general election is on November eighth, twenty twenty-two. Please remember to vote on or before that date. And a few other reminders. Next slide, please. Again, we urge everybody to go to votersedge.org, get the facts before you vote. You can find nonpartisan information on candidates, measures and campaign financing. Just enter your address or your zip code and you will get a personalized copy of your ballot. And lastly, next slide. Let's all remember, democracy is not a spectator sport. Please join all the league members and we welcome you to join us in How League, but most importantly. We encourage you to vote on November eighth. Thank you for attending tonight. Thank you again to our candidates. We wish you well in your campaign. Good night.
Good night.